Good evening, everyone. This is Michael O'Reilly and the Vice Chair of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'm Acting Chair for tonight's meeting. Today is August 20, 2020, and it is now 7:05 PM. I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. Please allow me to confirm those members and staff who are present and can hear me. We'll call each member, and please just respond with "here." Ryan Condon?
Here.
Ronald Schneider?
Schneider here.
Bruno Manini?
Here.
Dominic Pacchini? Leon Ambrosi?
Here.
All right, then we'll go to the staff. Rick Schultz?
Present.
William Agresta?
Present.
Georgia Kontolos?
Here.
And Sarah Stroud. All right, I'm going to read the introduction to the remote meeting. This public meeting is being conducted remotely in compliance with Section 1 of Governor Lamott's Executive Order Number 7B dated March 14, 2020. Using GoTo Technology, using this technology, the public shall participate in real time in this meeting via computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, using the access information set forth on the meeting agenda. Please be advised that each meeting has unique participation information, so be sure you have access to correct meeting. Notice is hereby given that only 250 participants may access this remote electronic meeting at any one time. Access to this meeting using this technology is granted solely by the technology provider on a first-access basis and is not controlled by the Town of Monroe. While it is anticipated that we will not exceed this limit, should it appear that we approach this said limit so that any member of the public is not denied access, I, as Chairman, reserve the right to adjourn and continue the meeting on a later date using an appropriate technology to ensure that all members of the public may participate. Please take notes of the following regarding this remote electronic meeting. Number 1, this meeting is being conducted in real time. Number 2, this meeting is open to the public. Number 3, any member of the public may listen or view this meeting anonymously. Number 4, this meeting is being recorded, and we ask you to mute your microphone unless recognized to speak. Anything you say or do or that is displayed on this screen may become part of the recording. Number 5, the recording shall be posted to the town's website within seven days. And number 6, that the recording shall be made available to the public within a reasonable time in town. If there are any public comments, I will read them. Before we go to the next item on the agenda, I'd just like to take a minute to remember Bill Porter, who was a member of this commission for, I believe, at least eight years, the last few of which he was our chairman. We were hoping to make 10 years so that he could receive an award at our annual convention, but it didn't look like we were going to. So let's take a minute, and if you don't mind, I'd like to just say a few words. Though God by the glorious resurrection of your son Jesus Christ destroyed death and brought life and immortality to light, grant that your servant William Porter, being raised with him, may know the strength of his presence and rejoice in his eternal glory, whom with you and the Holy Spirit lives and reigns, one God forever and ever. Thank you. I'd like to go now to our organizational and administrative matters. Number 3 on the agenda is the election of commission officers. So the Acting Chair will now entertain nominations for the Office of Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, before you do that, you need to seat an alternate. That would be Robert.
Does everyone vote Will or just the seated members?
Just the seated members.
Oh, okay. Then we'll seat Robert Westland. You there, Rob? So now going to item 3, the chair will is open to nominations for the election of the position of Chair. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Michael Riley for Chairman.
I second.
I have a nomination, I have a second.
Who's second?
Condon's second.
All right, I will accept the position. We'll vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say nay. Motion passes. The chair is open to nominations for Vice Chairman.
I'll nominate Bruno Manini as Vice Chair.
We have a nomination for Bruno Manini. Then we have a second.
Ambrosi.
Ambrosi. We have a nomination and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. Chair will recognize a motion for the nomination of Secretary of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I nominate Ryan Condon for Secretary.
We have a motion.
Ambrosi's second.
We have a second. And the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Next, we'll go to item 4, general public participation. Are any members of the public that would like to speak now before the commission on a matter that is not before the commission or that may not be for the commission in the near future? Say so now. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak during the public participation period? Hearing none, we'll move on to item 5, executive session. Chair will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I motion to go into executive session to discuss pending legal litigation.
Second.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Chair has a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, invite Will and Barbara.
All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. We will go into executive session, and we will invite William Agresta, Georgia Kontolos, Sarah Stroud, and Rick Schultz, as well as
Sarah Stroud is going to stay out. She's the recording secretary. She's going to stay out. Georgia stays on as monitor of the meeting.
All right, then. Unfortunately, everyone's going to have to be signed off right now, everyone else. So will that be something you can handle, Georgia?
Chairman, did you mention my name?
Barbara? Yes, yes, you're invited also.
Didn't hear you, just want to make sure.
Georgia, can you please explain to everyone what they have to do in signing off?
Yes, so all members that are calling in or that are on webcam for this meeting that are not a member of the commission or someone that the chairman just named, you are going to have to leave the meeting. I'm going to lock the meeting. And at that point, you know, give me a minute or two, you can attempt to log back in, and it'll hold you until we open the meeting back up to the public. So if you can go ahead and remove yourself from the meeting, wait a couple of minutes, and then log back in exactly the same way that you did previously, it will let you back into the meeting once we're ready to open to the public again. Sorry, guys, it just takes a second. Is there anyone from the commission that's calling in on a phone separate from their webcam?
Yes, Ron. Should I not?
No, I just, there's one caller, number 7. I don't want to take them off. Did you use the audio pin, Ron, when you logged in?
No, it just goes to my GoToMeeting app and automatically has everything ready.
You might not, you might not need to be in on the phone, then.
I'm going to dismiss this caller, hopefully it's not you.
Ron, try unmuting yourself.
All right.
All right. Awesome, okay. Then we should be good to go.
All right. So Barbara, you have the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. I'm taking off the recording, right?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
Mr. Chairman, in the votes, we need to call individuals.
Okay, well, it looks like it was unanimous.
Yeah, no, but in the, as in the meetings, when we have any kind of vote, let's
Go through the roll?
Yeah.
All right. There is. Welcome, everyone, back to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for 8/20/20. It's now 7:52 PM, and we are resuming the regular meeting. The first, well, the next item on the agenda is a general appointment. Jill and John Kimball, we'll wait until they're on. I don't see them back.
We're here. Hello?
You're there, okay, good. So item number 6, a general appointment, 1428 and 1432 Monroe Turnpike, Jill and John Kimball. This is an informal discussion of the proposed lot line adjustment on their property on Monroe Turnpike. Jill or John, would either of you like to give us a brief presentation? We have the maps. We have the before and we have the after maps.
Okay. So, um, so basically, what we're looking at is the before map and the after map are a little bit of a quirky lot configuration. We originally proposed a, when we were first bringing this thing through and subdividing the property, the cottage lot, which is on the existing map, that was kind of set up very differently in the, it was set up very differently when we originally proposed it, and then we changed it during the process to incorporate the minimum square out at the road down by Monroe Turnpike, and that's the yellow lot that you're looking at. Now, the cottage, to get to the cottage, though, you have to, you come from Monroe Turnpike, you go up the existing driveway, which also leads to the convent on land that's owned by the castle lot. You then cross back towards the cottage, again, almost entirely on land that's owned by the castle lot, to get to the cottage property. So the drive, most of the access for the cottage is derived over land that's owned by the castle lot. On the flip side, the castle lot, as you come around the house towards the front, you, and you get to the north side of the house, that driveway ends up on the lot of the cottage. So, and then you can also see on the orange lot on the existing, that lot stretches out and goes back around the cottage to the, to the back of the cottage and incorporates a portion of the field that was behind the cottage. In, in, in looking at the lot, because we have the, us on the market currently, and looking at the lots and talking to the real estate people and actually getting some feedback from potential people that are interested in it, they felt that we had actually proposed the, you know, a modification, which, which we thought made sense, which is the proposed lot line configuration, which basically puts the, the bulk of the accessway to the cottage on the cottage property. It still maintains the 200 feet of frontage, the 175 by 175 minimum square. But the reality is, both of these lots already exist. We're not trying to create a new lot, and that's one of the stipulations in the regulations, is that you can't put, make a quirky lot line for the purpose of creating a new lot. Well, both lots are already here, so we're not doing it to create a lot. We're basically, the biggest thing was to try and consolidate the castle property with the castle, which this proposed line does reasonably well, and then leave the other land kind of with the cottage, but it also puts the driveway and access to the cottage on the cottages property instead of that driveway having to be there by easement over somebody else's land. The castle would have an easement, as the, the existing convent also has an easement over that main roadway that comes up from Monroe Turnpike. That actually goes past both these driveways and up to the Sisters of the Holy Family property, and is also a combined easement for the, for the utilities that have to access the cell tower. So that easement will kind of be there in that configuration, almost no matter what. And so, you know, normally, because it's not a, it's basically a change of lot lines, it's not a subdivision or re-subdivision, as long as, as it works within the zoning regulations, staff is, you know, is in theory allowed to sign off on it. They wanted to make sure that the commission saw this, felt that it, it worked within the confines of the regulation, and they got feedback from the commission to, to, you know, before they did anything, which is, which is prudent, and, and so we kind of want to, you know, and then, you know, you know, well, whatever input you have, you know, is fine, I just, so that's kind of what we're looking to do. We'd like to file, we'd like the staff to be able to sign off on the proposed lot configuration. It doesn't change the, the number of lots, or, you know, it basically just changes, you know, where, how the lots are configured, and in our world, it kind of makes it, you know, in living here, it makes it work more normally, you know, and make, makes more logical sense, but that's kind of why we're asking for you to let us have the staff sign off.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. I'd just like to ask the commissioners if they have any questions about this proposal. Are there any questions about this proposal?
Well, in the regulations and the back, it says a lot that within less than a minimum required lot frontage or access typically narrowed to a rear building portion of a lot, measuring length less than the width of the required minimum lot frontage. So is this considered a rear lot?
Yeah, I mean, i- if you look at, if you look at half of the, half of the lots on Crownview Drive that exist, they would fail under that particular set of circumstances, because any lot, even look at the lot we have on the corner of, of Crownview, and, you know, it does, it goes to a narrow point in the back, it doesn't maintain 175 feet all the way to the back. Could you construe it as a rear lot? Yes, but the other, other aspect of a rear lot, or you could potentially construe it that, but the reason that rear lots were not sanctioned is because the, the commission said, we don't want a rear lot, we don't want to use a lot which would create a lot, an additional lot that couldn't be created already. So honestly, I could put two acres, a two-acre square on the front corner here, and then everything else would be excess land, and it would be impossible, you know, it would, it would, we wouldn't be having this meeting, because it would, we would meet every aspect of the regulations. But the reality is, you know, there's a building that's been built on this thing for, since 1935. We're not looking to add anything or get anything else out of it, we're just looking to, you know, to, to, to kind of work with the regulations the best we can. I don't think that regulation's a perfect regulation, because I think if you walk around town, you could basically eliminate half the lots in town and say that they do not meet the scope and, and black and white definition under that regulation. So, you know, it's just really a, so I think it lays down to a, kind of a judgment call. Does this do any harm to anything? Is it creating a precedent or doing anything that, 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 you know, it's not, it's not creating an additional space, it's not creating another building, it's basically just kind of reorganizing how, how things are done, I mean.
Okay, well, thank you, John. I would, if there are another, aren't any objections, I would like to direct the staff to go ahead and approve this.
I want to be clear, we're not really approving it. You're just determining whether this meets the definition of rear lot or not.
You're not approving it.
No, we don't approve lot line adjustments, we just help and guide applicants to make sure that they don't create something that isn't conforming that, so then that they want to get a building permit, they're going to get denied the building permit because their lot doesn't comply.
Well, then I would like to go ahead and suggest that this does not meet the determinant of a real lot. And I would suggest that I can go ahead with that, lot rededivision. I think we did that. Are there any other objections to that? If not, then we can do it. Thank you. If there are no other objections, I'd like to move on to the public hearings for tonight.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a public hearing under number 7. And I think I need to read something else here. The rules for public hearings, I will invite the applicant to present his application. Members of the audience will be asked for general comments. Then comments in favor of the application, comments opposed to the application will be invited. I will then invite each member by name of the commission to make discussion. After all members have had the opportunity to speak for the first time, I will repeat the invitation to each member until there is no further comment. Upon conclusion of the discussion, the applicant will have the final opportunity to speak. First public hearing for tonight is 54 Jockey Hollow Road, RF1 District. This is CGS 85-24, which is a municipal referral from the Town Council. This is SEP 2019-12, file number 1620A. EMS. Yes.
At this point, I'm going to recuse myself.
Chair will note that Ryan Condon has recused himself from this public hearing.
All right, let me know when we're, when I'm good to log back in.
Thank you.
I'm going to have to recuse myself as well, Westland.
Chair notes that Robert Westland is recusing himself from this public hearing. All right, well, so we have four members seated, correct?
Well, you'll need to seat Ron.
Okay.
For this matter.
With Ron Schneider seated, then we do have a quorum, correct?
We have Bruno, Leon, Ron, and yourself, that's four.
All right. I'd like to proceed with the public hearing, then. Will, what do you have as far as exhibits?
Okay, the additional exhibits since the last session are Exhibit 21, addition alterations to the plan set. Exhibit 22, responses to ART comments by the applicant. Exhibit 23, updated drainage calculations by the applicant's engineer. Exhibit 24, subject design calculations by the applicant's engineer. Exhibit 25, waiver of zoning, zoning waiver letter requests by the applicant. Exhibit 26, CD containing the exhibits. Exhibit 27, copy of land transfer map from Lewis Associates representing the applicant. Exhibit 28, updated town engineer ART comments. Exhibit 29, updated comments and responses to planner comments. Exhibit 30, ART comments responses to Health Department. Exhibit 31, email from a neighbor complaining, Nicole Arut. Exhibit 32, applicant Exhibit 32, applicant responses to ART comments. Exhibit 23, revised sheet L dash 1.0 by the applicant. That is all. And this is a recurring hearing, as I said, from I believe the March 5th, 2020 meeting.
Thank you. Will, who do we have representing the applicant tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commissions. Brian Humes, representing the applicant. I'm the principal at Chikuski Humes Architects, representing the town of Monroe.
Thank you, Mr. Humes. Would you like to, um, address the comments and resume your presentation?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, this is a continuation, as Mr. Agresta said, of our March 5th public hearing. We resubmitted documents on June 8th, and it's good to be back in front of the commission again. I want to thank the assistance of town staff, specifically Rick Schultz, town planner, Will Agresta, the P and Z coordinator, Scott Schlanson, the town engineer, and assistance from the health department, and Matt Bertoli. And we also want to thank Georgia for her, uh, technology assistance tonight. I think she has the documents that we've submitted. There were 21 pages. Uh, if, if those are available. I think the rules of engagement, I have two tokens. One is a ask the expert token, and I might be able to ask one of the experts that I just mentioned. Or a phone a friend token. And I do have Tom Linden also available. He's the site planner, landscape architect. That's been assisting with the application. So Tom is also available if needed. The application is modifications to 54 Jackie Hollow Road. It, uh, is for the purposes of an extend, expanded facility for Monroe EMS facility. I think in the days of COVID, we can all appreciate the work that EMS has been doing for everybody. Uh, they are our heroes. And for the town of Monroe, they have been working in some conditions that need improvements. This is a project that the town of Monroe has taken on. We're, we are just spokespersons for the building committee, which is informed by the town. And spokespersons for the Monroe staff, the Monroe EMS staff. And, uh, they're looking forward to expanded improved facilities so they can maintain services, uh, maintain social distancing, and also maintain a volunteer corps throughout the facility, throughout the municipality, so they can continue to provide services. The existing facility at 54 Jackie Hollow Road is 6,320 square feet. We are proposing two separate additions onto the south side of the building of approximately 2,000 square feet each. Uh, to support that, we're also proposing expanded parking. So are we able to show any of the documents? Do we know?
I think we're working on it. Getting them on the computer.
Okay.
Is there anything specific you want me to go to, any page?
Uh, you could, it's just the 21 sheets that we had submitted. Uh, we're not going to spend time going through all 21.
Okay.
If you want me to, I don't know if I can share my screen or not, but.
I can do that, or I can do this, and you tell me where to go from here.
There you go. And we'll just go through these in quick sequence because there have been items that came up on March 5th that I want to address. The land transfer map that you're showing here is showing that the proposed project is proposing to transfer land of about 1.4 acres from adjacent town of Monroe property to expand the property area at 54 Jackie Hollow Road. Uh, you can go on to the next slide. And I can explain a little later. This is the, just an existing, uh, topography survey showing existing conditions. You can see the area of the existing building. And to the north, you can see the extent of the asphalt. And there's also an extension of gravel parking lot which exists for overflow parking, which it just exists just to the north of the. There's no proposed changes in the curb cuts to Jackie Hollow Road will be entering and exiting apparatus and exiting and entering vehicles at the same location. And the two additions would be to the south side or the Jackie Hollow roadside of the facility. Uh, you can go to the next one, Jordan. Uh, drainage calculations have been submitted as Mr. Agresta mentioned. So, uh, we have updated all drainage calculations and submitted those. This is a drainage map. To identify the downstream drainage systems and the abutting properties and drainage. Next. Okay, this is the proposed, uh, parking area. One of the items that was brought up at the last March 5th public hearing was the amount of parking that we were providing for, for onsite parking. On March 5th, we were proposing a total of 64 parking spaces, and this would support staff needs and also the need of a meeting room. Uh, there was some objections from neighbors and abutters about the amount of, uh, impact that would have on the tree area to the north of the property. Because the, uh, the area to the west of the building and to the south of the building, uh, that is being used for existing parking, expanded parking. It was more of a concern about how the parking impacted the north and the tree area to the north. Since that last public hearing, we have reviewed this with EMS staff. We have reviewed this with the EMS building committee. And they have agreed to reduce the number of parking from 64 to 52. What that does is it maintains tree area to the north. It reduces all of the impact to the north. Uh, we are slightly beyond the gravel area which exists in the clearing to the north. So we've minimized a significant portion of impact to the existing woods. And any impact on a butter is by, by, uh, expanding parking into those woods. It reduces impervious surfaces, uh, on the lot. It preserves trees. But I think mostly it, it gives EMS a solution that they can still, uh, live with. They look at the staffing levels and they're trying to maintain a staffing level of about 50 volunteers throughout the, uh, uh, community. At 52 parking spaces, they could put all of the volunteer staff, uh, onto the property. One of the concerns with trying to get lower than 52 is there's no real option for off-street parking and there's no a butter parking available. There's no convenient, uh, parking in this area other than residential properties. We really need to find a solution that brings the cars onto the property and accommodates the, the volume that is there. Because we're doing this project doesn't mean that all of a sudden the staffing is going to exponentially increase. It's, is an EMS facility. It's going to be maintained as an EMS facility. And so the staffing numbers and the parking is really to accommodate current numbers and trying to maintain current volunteers at this, at the level that it is currently. 52 spaces, the building committee and, and the EMS staff feel that this is a viable solution for them. And they will make this work, uh, for not just today, but into the future. So I think it responds to the abutters. It is, uh, we've listened to what the concerns were. The town has responded to the abutters concerns and refused to park the town on the parking spaces. So you can imagine, Baltimore spaces were all located off the north side of the lot. So this is the, the latest proposal for 52.
Can you find out who that is?
That's not me.
There we are. That should be better.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next slide. This is a slide showing areas of demolition. And if anything is you see in a green box, the green box is indicating that there is a change from the March 5th proposal to the June 8th proposal that you're seeing tonight. So the, the impact there in the green box is that we're maintaining the tree line to the north and, and not impacting the, the existing trees to the north because of reduced parking counts. Continue. Next. Uh, the site layout plan. The, the areas that are clouded and green there is some further clarification that we've, um, placed onto the plan for staff comments. And, uh, the staff have reviewed all of those and offered their responses, uh, that we satisfied the requests. Some of these having to do with loading zones, uh, some of these having to do with, uh, uh, materials within islands, um, loading zones in the front of the building, loading zones in the back of the building. Uh, the, the reduced parking. We've also indicated that the fence, the screen fence material along the west side, we are screening the parking from the butter to the west with a screen. And it's a cedar, uh, a privacy screen. Next. This plan is a site grading plan. There's been really no major, uh, changes to the grading plan other than what we just discussed on, on the north side of the lot. Next. Site utilities plan. We have clarified on the site utilities plan, our intent for a, an existing holding tank on the property to be replaced, the existing septic tank on the property to be replaced and, and how it connects to a leach field which is on the south side of the property. It, it's, it's in its close proximity to its existing locations. This has all been reviewed by the health department. Uh, and we've received positive comments back from Matt at the health department on any concerns that he might have had on the septic system. Next. Site planting plan, uh, of significance here is we have increased planting to the west. Uh, the increased planting to the west provides additional screen planting to the butter, to the west. With the, uh, addition of the, uh, new construction, we are impacting some of the screening. So we are going back and adding screen planting on the west between any new construction and the abutting property. Again, I think this is the, uh, another representation how we've listened to the property owners and listened to abutters and tried to be, be sensitive and good neighbors. And still get a facility which is meeting the needs of, of EMS. Uh, another item that came up in March was lot coverage. The zone that we are in, the RF one zone, has a maximum lot coverage of 15%. And the existing conditions at this property have a lot coverage of 24.8%. This is, uh, what we have, why we have proposed a land transfer of 1.4 acres with the abutting school property. With that increase in land area, we have gone from an existing lot coverage of 24.8% to a lot coverage of 24.06%, or reduction in overall lot coverage of 0.74%. It was the, the proposal that we had presented in March was a similar proposal for 54 Jackie Hollow Road. But what was being questioned by the butter was what, whether we were making a conforming or non-conforming lot at the school. Uh, it was a little bit of confusion on that issue. We did go back and look at that. And we were, um, feeling confident that the school property was a conforming lot. But we also discovered that the butter had a case for it being non-conforming if it was classified as an RF one property. We were confident that it was an RF two property. So we were feeling that we were analyzing it according to the worst case scenario. And in essence, we were both kind of correct. And, and the lot was a split lot between two zones. Uh, in discussion with the town, they felt the more restrained, a more restrictive zone was the appropriate zone for the school. Uh, it did conform with abutting properties and that, uh, zone was changed in a recent meeting of planning and zoning. And I think it might be, uh, referenced that that zone for the school is now classified as an RF two zone, the more restrictive case. Uh, that does make that school property a conforming lot. It also makes 54 Jackie Hollow Road a conforming lot. Uh, and we are reducing the overall lot coverage below existing conditions. While we do exceed the 15% maximum per zone, we are utilizing the existing conditions that we found at 24.8 and improving it, improving the lot coverage beyond that, uh, below that level. So that was another item that was in discussion. And, uh, we have feeling confident that we have conformance, not just with our lot, but with the school abutting property based on our proposal tonight. So I think that, uh, we might just have one more slide showing an erosion control plan. And then other than that, there are just site details that accompany the plans. So I, I wanted to make it brief, but I also wanted to hit the highlights that were brought up in March and any concerns that, uh, were brought up by abutters. So I, I will listen to comments and, uh, have an opportunity later. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Humes. I'd like to open the, uh, public hearing to, uh, the public right now for a general comments. Are there any general comments, uh, from the public at this point?
Uh, Mr. Chair Don Smith, EMF's chief.
Don Smith. Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. First, thank you. Thank the, uh, commission. I also want to thank Mr. Humes for the work on the project and, uh, kind words at the beginning. I need to echo a little bit. The volunteers have worked through this pandemic and are continuing to work through it in the, uh, current building and substandard conditions. And, you know, throughout this, we have tried to always be good neighbors. We want to continue to do that moving forward. And through the process, we've tried to listen to concerns. And as mentioned earlier, try to address as many of those concerns as possible with some of the fencing, uh, lighting, and now the change to the parking. Uh, because we can understand their issues with the way it was set up previously. So we're trying to do everything we can to work with them, yet give us a building that will allow us to continue to do our job today and well into the future. And it's been, as most of you know, the background already, so I'm not going to go into everything. But we've been working on this project for probably 15 years after moving in this building. Uh, and in this, that time, our call volume has grown, our vehicles and staffing has grown. And as you know, we've outgrown this building and we need, uh, a solution to it. And again, I'm here if anybody has any questions from the side of the service. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak, uh, in favor of this application? If not, are there any members of the public that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Now, Georgia, will I be able to hear any members of the public?
Mike, I was going to say, there's a couple people that I had to mute. So let me go back into my list and unmute all of the callers just to make sure there's no one trying to speak at this point. So everyone that was calling in via phone should now be unmuted. So if you'd like to ask that again, Mike, just to make sure.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak in opposition to this, um, application? Hearing none, then I would like to go to the members of the commission. I will go through the members of the commission in order. I will go through the members of the commission in order. Like to start with, um, Bruno Maini. Do you have any comments, uh, questions?
No, I'm all set.
Like to go to, uh, Rob Westland. Any comments or questions?
Rob recused himself, so did Ryan.
Oh, then Ron.
I'm all set.
All right, Rob, the re-speech here is not wrong. Mr. Ambrosi.
I'm all set.
And, uh, Dominic Penishin did not show up, correct? Dominic, are you here?
Dominic would have to recuse himself as well.
Okay. Uh, Will, do you have any further comments or questions?
Um, before I do, Georgia, I keep seeing one of this, one of the, um, items lighting up. Do you know who that is? That one?
I have caller, caller number 17. I'm getting some kickback from, but they're not talking. It's just whatever's going on behind them.
Okay, um, final comments is that there were some updated memos by the health department, by my, um, by me and by the town engineer. For the most part, everything is in order and there's a few items that the applicant responded, they will revise. So those I assume would fall as conditions. With regards to the health department, same thing, I think everything was fine and that could fall to condition. So I don't think staff has any more comments.
Thank you, Mr. Gresta. I have no other comments myself, and it goes back to you, Mr. Humes. Uh, what would you like us to do with this application?
Well, it's the intent of the building committee to see that this public hearing is completed. And because this project has, uh, continued since a March fifth public hearing for, for conditions that were really beyond anybody's control, uh, including the difficulty of your commission to get a quorum. If there is a re, a request that you could deliberate on this and make a determination tonight, while we do have a quorum, uh, that may be an assistance to the project. So it's just a, a consideration for a determination tonight, um, if this public hearing is deemed to be closed.
So then you're requesting to close the hearing tonight?
We are.
All right, I'm gonna, uh, call the roll. Mr. Ambrosi.
Close the earth.
Mr. Schneider.
And close it.
Mr. Maini.
Close it.
I'm in favor of closing the hearing as well. Therefore, this hearing is hereby closed.
Um, Mr. Chairman, just to remind you, in addition to the public hearing for the special exception permit, you're also considering, um, the eight twenty-four referral from the town council, which obviously is of the same substance and matter. So unless there's any other questions you have in regards to referral, um, that item can be put off along with the, uh, decision for later in the deliberation section of the meeting.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you, Will. So, um, I believe we can invite back the other members at this point.
And we would reseat the original seating.
So that's Rob and not Ron, right?
Correct.
Just to confuse us again, all right. So let's do that. While you're doing that, we can go on to item number eight, which is, um, RAA 2020 dash O two file number one zero zero nine E, which is B one M U district. Request for a text amendment that has been deferred until next meeting by the applicant. Number nine is SCP 2020 dash O one file number sixteen twenty-one A three ninety Monroe Turnpike B two district. Uh, that has been deferred to the September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty meeting by the applicant. The next item on the agenda is on the permit amendment modifications.
Do we have the people back that we need?
Yes, can you hear me in the email?
Yep.
Okay, great.
So Rob and Ryan. Ryan back? I don't see Ryan.
Has anyone contacted him?
No, I don't think so, um.
I can contact him.
I just texted Ryan to come back in.
Thanks. Ryan Condon has arrived. So now we're talking about four ninety-four Main Street, ten eight S A one file number one four seven five eight. This is a permanent modification. It's a change of use. It's involving the expansion of the existing Monroe Social Restaurant into an adjacent vacant retail unit. Do we have any exhibits, uh, Will, on this application?
One sec. Um, exhibit one, application form, exhibit two, parking sketch, that's all.
Thank you. And, um, whom do we have for the applicant on this application?
Hi, my name is Frank Lunati. How you doing? I'm the property owner. And, uh, Constantine is the owner of the, uh, Monroe Social, the restaurant that we're looking to expand.
This is Frank. Um, how do you spell your last name?
L U N A T I.
Would you like to go ahead with a brief presentation?
Sure, thank you. I'm glad, I just appreciate you guys squeezing me in tonight. Uh, so what we're looking to do is, so Constantine right now, uh, occupies obviously Monroe Social, that's about, uh, seventeen hundred uh, and seventy-six square feet of restaurant. The entertainment, um, retail unit next to him became vacant. And he had requested or was requiring about, uh, expanding into that space, which is about almost fifteen hundred square feet, fourteen ninety-six. So we came to, uh, we met with Will and with Rick and we kind of walked through the parking lot. Uh, and they were, you know, gracious enough because I'm really, this is out of my league really when it comes to zoning and amount of parking spots. Once you expand or change from retail to restaurant. And the existing, you know, we resurfaced the parking lot and looked at the parking spaces and basically came up the same amount of parking spaces after we resurfaced it that existed. So that's about, I think, sixty-seven parking spaces right now. With the change from retail to restaurant, uh, Will could probably tell you better, but I believe it was, we would have needed, I don't know if it was fifteen or fourteen or seventeen more parking spaces than we have. So we were trying to figure out a way, I don't want to say around that, but somehow that we could work with that. Um, and in speaking with Constantine and Will and also Rick, uh, looking at the usage and the timeframe of when, um, Constantine's restaurant is mostly used, uh, is more so, you know, late afternoon to evening when some of the other businesses close. So we're looking to, uh, and I don't know exactly what it's called, but, um, I believe it's an all-street share parking reduction. Uh, looking, and I believe it's a reduction of thirty percent based on the different peak hour usage. So we, we're trying to work to see if we can do that in order to change the existing retail to restaurants so that the expansion could follow through. I can't say, and I know, I know that with zoning and this numbers, it's a numbers, uh, thing. But anytime I've ever been there, Constantine, you guys probably know better than me, but I try to go up at least once a week at different times. I've never really seen a parking lot more than three quarters full. It does get full, but I've never seen it more than three quarters. Um, so I kind of feel like that if we were allowed that, uh, thirty percent reduction to get this to pass, I think that that would be, you know, beneficial to, uh, Constantine.
Okay, I see that, um, you've also submitted a deferred parking plan.
Right. So for that, I kind of wanted to have a backup plan in case that we can't go with, um, or if we do try this, it'd be nice to at least try this because it would be kind of costly to move forward with a, another parking lot. But so the, I had an architect come in and look at the land and was able to come up with, uh, a minimum of a parking lot behind and above for another twenty, uh, parking spaces. If need be.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'd like to get the members of the, uh, commission, give the members of the commission a chance to ask any questions at this point. I'm going to go through the members in no particular order, but let's start with, um, Ryan Condon.
So, Ryan, do you have any questions or comments?
Um, yeah, so just to get it straight, ideally you're asking for, uh, basically a waiver, the, the thirty percent. Um, alternatively though, you would be, you would be willing to consider this addition of, uh, twenty more spaces?
Correct, yes.
Obviously the preference being not to have to put in more lots, uh, for cost.
Yes.
All right, I don't really have any questions right now, um, but yeah, I'll, uh, pass for now.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Ryan. Um, Bruno, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah. Here's my concern. My concern is that is that if we do waive the thirty percent, thirty percent is a big number, right? We're not asking for five or, or even ten, right? I mean, thirty percent, you're, you're almost a third of the parking that you're going to be short. My concern is what happens when when maybe the lot to the left, someone rents that store or if one of those other places become become vacant and, uh, a more of a nighttime business goes in there because we can't control who goes into these places. So a thirty percent decrease in my eyes, uh, I'm not in favor of. Um, I think that's just a really, really big number. Um, I understand under current situation and current circumstances, it works with that thirty percent decrease. But unfortunately, with planning and zoning, we have to plan for the future as well. Um, and that's just a really big number in my eyes.
Bruno, it's thirty percent of the predominant use parking requirements, not thirty percent of the entire parking requirement.
Okay, so how many spaces are we talking?
So if my memory serves me, their parking requirement increases to like forty-nine or something, so it, it allows a reduction of fourteen spaces.
Yeah, but that's a small lot and fourteen spaces is a big number.
Well, fourteen spaces across the entire lot, which also has spaces from the other uses on the property.
Yeah, but you're also talking, you're talking about fourteen spaces that are not getting used during their time, but what if somebody moves out and somebody comes in?
Well, that, that's part of, you've done this, this board has done this on other projects. And what it is, is you have an understanding or you, you, you know what the, the different uses are. And that's obviously the support for your rationale for doing it, right? So you're, you have put restrictions on granting of that reduction that should any changes in the variation of peak hour usage change, that they have to come back to you for that approval. So if they were to bring in another nighttime use, before they could occupy the space, they would have to come back to you to reevaluate the, the idus we have parking. And should that happen, that, that might be when the.
So, so who would have to come back to us? Would the restaurant have to come back to us or the new tenant going into one of the other spots?
Well, the new tenant with the owner, because the owner benefits from all the permits of the tenant.
Yeah, but, okay, so.
The property owner.
But it's his choice.
Right, I understand that, but so then the restaurant would get that waiver and then the new guy would have to fight for spaces.
Well, the restaurants, the entire, the entire facility is getting the waiver. If you concur that the restaurant, which is the, the predominant, um, thing, that requires like forty-nine spaces, the others require, if memory serves me, about, uh, a third of that. So.
I, but that's what you're talking about as of today. I'm talking about what if a nighttime business goes into one of those other.
I'm telling you, you, if you, the way you've done that in the past is you put a stipulation on the waiver that this is only good with this, with these uses, hours of operation. You change hours of operation, you get to reevaluate it. Because exactly what you're saying is if you introduce another nighttime use, well, maybe that's not gonna, the fourteen isn't gonna work. So you have that protection.
Yeah, as long as there's a stipulation in there, I definitely, uh, you definitely need to put a stipulation in there, in my eyes. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Bruno. Um, Leon.
Yeah, um, did you, did you, um, do analysis of the peak hours and what businesses' hours are and and what times they run and, and what their peak hours are and what their off hours are? Did you turn that into the town at all?
I did not. I could only go by what there, when I, when I've been there and also looking on their websites, which I've seen, you know, I, I can't go a hundred percent by what the website says because I've seen the nail salon on her website, uh, say that her hours until seven o'clock at night, and I've gone up there at four o'clock and there's nobody there. Likewise, State Farm is open five days a week till five o'clock in the afternoon, but I've been up there at three o'clock or two o'clock to change some light bulbs and there's nobody there as well. Um, so I think it's difficult to just go by what they advertise that I was being open. Um, you know, I was like, I could say that I, I've owned the property for about a year now. Well, it's a little over a year. And, and I'm not pushing this, I'm trying to help out Constantine, but anytime I've ever been there, uh, even when the furniture store was there, I've never seen the parking lot where it was more than three quarters full or anybody parking in the street or any sort of parking issues or else I wouldn't be coming in front of you guys and I just would put somebody else in there.
Yeah, but I think we need to have some kind of, uh, paperwork on their hours, their peak hours, and so this, in case things change there, that we know what, what the hours of those businesses are and what their peak hours are. I think that, I don't mind, I don't mind changing the parking count, but I think that we need to look into, um, what their hours are, what businesses are there, and what's their peak hours and what's their off hours. I, I imagine that the weekends is when the restaurant's going to be mostly busy on Thursday, Friday, Saturdays and Sundays. So, um, I think that we should have that information or you should, as part of us doing this, at least put that in, into some kind of file in the town so we know what you have going on here. That's all the questions I have, Mike.
Rick, don't we have that information? That information, you know, is being compiled as we speak.
We don't have it right now, right, Rick?
Not comprehensively like that, and we need to get that in file. So absolutely, that should be a condition if you want to move forward. And I know the app doesn't have a problem with that.
Thank you. Um, did I go through everyone on the commission? Is, did I miss anyone?
Yeah, me, Rob Westland.
Rob, okay, go ahead, Rob.
Well, I agree with compiling the information on the hours and peak times for the existing tenants that are in the shopping center at this point. Um, I've been in and out of that parking lot for years during its peak times and I've never seen it at capacity. Um, so as long as we have the information, I don't have a problem with it.
All right, thank you. So, Will. What's the procedure? What's the procedure with these um permit modifications? Do we have to um?
Of you just, right now, we're just gathering information?
I'm sorry.
You're just gathering information. So if you have no more questions or don't need any more information, you would just close this portion of the meeting and then this would move into deliberations, section later.
All right, then let's um, I'd like to hear from the members of the commission on whether we should close this portion of the hearing. Um, Ambrosi?
Close.
And Condon?
Close.
Westland?
Close.
And Maiini?
Close.
All right, I also vote to close. So we'll close this portion of the he- of the hearing and um I believe we can talk about it during deliberations, correct? Will?
Yeah, that would be, that would be the next step.
All right, thank you. And um, thank you, Mr. Lannerty.
Thank you, guys, for your time. Have a nice night.
Okay, so moving along, let's go to number eleven, pending meeting minutes. Does everyone have the meeting minutes from July sixteenth? Yes, I imagine you do. Um, the chair will entertain a motion to accept the pending meetings from July sixteenth.
Make a motion to accept the pending minutes from the July sixteenth meeting.
We have a motion, do we need a second?
Second.
Have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion of the minutes?
I'm good.
I'm good.
All right, then we have no further discussion. We can now call the roll to accept the minutes as drafted. Uh Leon Ambrosi?
Accept, I'm good.
For Ryan Condon?
Uh Condon, yes.
Robert Westland?
Westland, yes.
Ron Schneider, you are on the minutes as well.
He's not seated, so we're gonna pass over him.
Okay, Bruno Mai- Maiini?
Yes.
Okay, then the minutes are accepted as drafted. We'll go to item number twelve, is deliberations on pending items. The first item on the agenda is the ZCA twenty twenty dash zero one, file number one zero one four D. Three forty-five, three sixty-five, three seventy-five, Fan Hill Road, F two and R one districts. If you all remember, that is the um zone boundary change that we deliberated on at our last meeting. Um, this is. Believe we're combining two lots. Yes. And um on this, we have O'Reilly, Ambrosi, Condon, Westland and Schneider. I'm not in on this one?
No, you weren't on it, Bruno.
Okey dokey.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the draft you have in front of you, there there are some editorial changes that need to be made, given that our last meeting was postponed or canceled and that. So in every instance where you find either the date August sixth or November sixth, they would respectively be changed to August twentieth and Aug- and November twenty.
Are there any other changes, Will?
Those are the only changes from from my editorial.
Okay. So then um I believe we need to vote on accepting this draft, correct?
Correct.
All right, so I'll go through the roll. Unless there's any other discussion you'd like any of the members have any discussion now? All right, so uh we'll start with um Ambrosi.
Ambrosi, yes.
Condon.
All right, but we, I I had recused myself from this portion of the meeting last time, so I don't get.
Well, then we need to take your name off of the vote.
I'm sorry. That's right, we were down to four.
Yeah, and then it's Rob.
Westland, yes.
And Ron?
Ron, yes.
And um O'Reilly, yes, on that as well.
And that's four, four zero, motion passes. And as stated in the draft that you just approved, the effective date of this zone change would be um.
November.
Become effective on, well, the effective date is on the date the same as recorded on the Monroe Land records, but no sooner than date of publication of notice of decision as authorized in the resolution.
All right, I'd like to deliberate on the um fifty-four Jackie Hallow Road hearing that we just heard tonight. So on that one, we're back to who are we back to? We're back to uh Leon, Ron, Bruno and myself, correct? All right, so I open the hearing now for deliberation amongst the four of us. So let's start with uh Leon on the EMS expansion. What's your thinking on that?
I'm thinking of going for an approval.
Draft an approval?
Yeah.
All right, um. Ron? Ron Schneider, what's your thinking on this?
I agree. I think it's.
You're great. All right, so it's Leon, Ron, um Bruno. We waited for you for this one. And. That's a yes, correct?
Okay, yeah.
All right, and um I would like to therefore direct the staff to um draft an approval.
Um, based on that, I assume you also are gonna direct us to draft a favorable referral response back to Town Council on the eight twenty-four referral, correct?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
All right, um, let's see where we are.
Mr. Chairman, um, can you stack up for a second and get some clarification on the previous item, the zone change? I'm not sure if I heard or I know who made the motion and second on the approval of that resolution.
Who made the motion on the zone boundary change? Let's see. I think it was Rob and Ron. No, yes, wasn't it?
I don't know, can they tell us?
Ron or Rob, did you on the?
It wasn't me.
I think we didn't, I think you did, I think you just called the vote without a motion and second. I think we should review that.
Well, let's go back then to zone by, zone boundary change. Do we have a a motion to accept?
We have yourself, Leon, and Robert and Ronald that need to chime in.
Robert, Ron, you, either of you make a motion to approve this?
Yeah, I can, uh, let me, I'm just trying to find it on the agenda here for the file number.
It it's right there at the deliberation section.
One zero one four D, correct?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the ZCA dash twenty zero, two zero two zero dash zero one, file number one zero one four D.
Ambrosi, second.
We have a motion and we have a second, and I think we already have a vote.
Oh, I, revote, please.
Sorry, get that.
Revote, please.
Revote. I'll call the roll. O'Reilly, yes. Ambrosi?
Yes.
Westland?
Westland, yes.
And Schneider?
Schneider, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so where were we?
So the next item that you could deliberate on would be Monroe Social.
All right, I'd like to deliberate on Monroe Social. Now, on this, we have who's, let me just find out who's who's seated on this one.
That was the uh the original five members tonight with uh the four seat, the four commissioners and the seated uh Westland.
All right.
So the the question at hand is the approval of change of use, which involves a waiver reduction, not a waiver, but a reduction in parking for shared use of uh the shortfall of spaces based on um provision of uh documentation supporting or detailing out the um peak hour usages of the uses. And it would be subject to if those uses change revisiting with the commission.
Okay, very good. I'm gonna go through the members for um discussion comments. Um, so let's start with Condon.
Yeah, so I uh, I'm for it, uh, looking at it. I know uh, you know, nationally they're trying to limit parking or we're overparked, so I know that is something. I don't think I'm a real big fan of knocking down the trees and the uh the hill behind there. I've been there, the property seems really steep behind it, so I'm not really sure about adding the parking spaces there. Um, I can't help but kind of think, and this is before my time, so sorry if I'm uh upsetting anyone bringing it up, but I know there was a restaurant there prior uh that had had issues uh wanting to expand and uh eventually he left and he's got a restaurant down the street in Newtown. So I mean, obviously, he didn't do things the right way, uh and and that's why he left, but I would hate to see us uh, you know, push a restaurant out of town uh based on parking. Especially now too, where you're, you know, these restaurants are being forced to limit the amount of people inside and expand their spaces. This just seems like a, for me at least, a no-brainer, especially during uh this kind of pandemic situation we're dealing with. Uh, I feel like we gotta be kind of forced to think about these things in different ways. Um, so I would uh be for approving the uh the waiver.
Thank you, Ryan. Um Bruno?
Again, I'm all for it as long as we have a uh, like Will said, we have a waiver to uh revisit this if if businesses, other businesses leave and usages get it, get uh maximized over there during peak hours.
Okay. All right, thanks, Bruno, and I think um Leon.
Uh, yeah. I'm good. As long as he turns in the thing for peak hours and what the business hours are, you know, and what their peak hours are, that's what part of my condition would be.
Okay, thank you. And then um I know I'm gonna get this wrong. Rob, are you seated on this one?
Yeah, yes, I am. All right, uh, I'm I'm also for it. Um, I think it helps support our business climate and also at this point um a large portion of our community uses alternate means of travel, which we haven't really discussed, which is, you know, such as Uber. Um, people are getting out and they're traveling and their cars aren't necessarily in the parking lot like they used to be. Um, and that's also lessening the burden on the uh the amount of parking spaces.
Okay, thanks, Rob. So I'd like to then direct the uh staff to draft an approval.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if you want, this is a a simple matter. You could entertain a motion based on those conditions, which are pretty simple.
To approve?
Yes, if you wanted to.
All right. And then look, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Condon. Do I have a second?
Westland, second.
Westland, second. Then we'll call the roll. Ambrosi?
Yes.
Condon?
Condon, yes.
Westland?
Westland, yes.
Maiini?
Yes.
And O'Reilly, yes. So then we can go ahead with the approval.
Yeah, that'll be drafted and we'll implement it from here on in.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Next on the agenda is a time extension. EFP two thousand nineteen dash oh three, file number one oh four E four and seventy-one eighty Main Street. I have a letter from Mitch DSO who is um requesting an extension to this excavation and fill permit dated two six twenty twenty. Um, he says, due to um the COVID nineteen pandemic and related shutdowns, they're requesting an extension to to the final date um from August fourth to September ninth, two thousand and twenty. So chair will entertain a motion to grant the time extension.
I'll make a motion to grant the time extension, EFP dash two zero one nine dash zero three.
Have a motion, uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, we have a second. I'll call the roll. Ambrosi? Leon? Time extension. Does he still have violations on that property? I don't know, I don't have any other um literature on him. Do you know, Will?
There is an open violation that um has not been appealed and is not being and has, and I don't believe anything's going on with it.
So maybe we should have him come in front of us before we give an extension, no?
Well, this is. Well, they were operating as they were across the street as well before finalizing the plans, which is what this is giving the extension to finalize.
Okay. Well, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, so I just wanted to put that out there, that I know they have a violation without their standing, so.
All right, okay. You're okay with it?
I'm okay with it.
Bruno?
Maiini, yes.
Ryan?
Condon, yes.
And Westland?
Westland, yes.
And O'Reilly, yes. Next item on the agenda is a bond release, item fourteen, SEP two thousand sixteen dash twelve, file number one five eight two A, one fifty-four Enterprise Drive. This is a request for a full final bond release and uh I have a. This is a request for a full final bond release, and I have a letter from Mary Blackburn, solely engineering architect, on behalf of Bruce Moore, requesting the release of the bond. I have a bond release report from Scott Schatzline, recommending a full, total release of the bond. Chair will entertain a motion to release the bond.
I'll make a motion for bond release, SEP-2016-12.
I have a motion, need a second?
Second.
We have a second, and we have a motion. I'll call the roll. Ambrosi?
Ambrosi, yes.
Westland?
Westland, yes.
Condon?
Condon, yes.
Maeney?
Yes.
And O'Reilly, yes. We are moving right along. Other business, number 15, Regulation Review Amendment Work Session. So we have two items here to end the night. The first one, we did discuss, I believe, previously at our last meeting. That's to do, change the B1 to a B2 district on Main Street, on the parcels north of Judd Road. This is mostly to bring into conformity the uses that are B2 in this area. We have a text amendment that I believe you all have, that I think Will wrote up along with a map.
George, do you have these images?
Yep, give me one second.
Georgia, can you go to the first map? It's hard to see on the screen, but I don't know if you have your paper copies. This first map shows you the, the area involved, which are all the colored parcels. They're primarily the parcels on the left and right sides of Main Street, north of the intersection with Judd Road and Purdy Hill Road. This map shows you not only the parcels involved, but also the land uses, which I'll refer you to the legend. There's a mix of some retail uses. There's some, a few of them that are auto-service oriented. The, the green ones are vacant parcels, and then there's a few houses within this mix. The proposal as discussed last time, which we prepared, is looking at rezoning primarily from B1 to the B2 district, and in doing so, cleaning up some of the bifurcated conditions that exist, like for instance, if you look down on Judd Road, there's Lot Number 37. It's a pink lot. You can see the big black dash line going through the middle of it, more or less. So part of that lot is residentially zoned, and part of that lot is zone B1 presently. That lot fronts on Judd Road. That lot has a driveway, and that lot has been a house since, I believe, the 1800s. So in this scenario, that lot, we eliminate the bifurcation, but make that lot completely residential zone. If you look at the lots next to it, the one to the, to the south, which is yellow, and the two that are orange, lots 41 and 40, there's a little sliver of 41 that goes over the line, same thing on 39, those we would capture into the B2, the new B2 zone. Similarly, across the street to the north, Lot 4, there's a little portion of that lot to the very north, which is in the industrial zone, and behind it is a portion of a larger lot, which is Lot 3, which is a town open space parcel, which is that green portion, which is currently zone B1, but we would rezone that into the, even though it's in the I District, it's an open space parcel, nothing's gonna happen to it, but we're just gonna clean it up with the property lines and make it the same zone. And that's reflected in the next maps. So, George, if you go to the next map. So that... So this one is showing, if you look at the area from the intersection north, which is to the left, and it's hatched, those, that would be where the new B2 zone would, would have its boundary. As I was saying, it would go around the residential lot. It would encapsulate the pieces in the back of those three lots next to it. It would include the piece to the north on that other lot and eliminate the, and change the industrial district to the rest of the open space parcel. And the area to the south is the existing B2 zoning, so that would be one continuous area of B2 zoning, should you do this. Another piece of the, the discussion is that along the southwesterly boundary, which is on the Judd roadside, if you, George, if you go back to the other map, it shows a little clearer. So if you look at that parcel that's to the north of the, where it says Judd Road, it goes along the back of the, those parcels. It's towards the bottom of the map, and that is an RF2 zone. That land is state of Connecticut, lands associated with the watershed at the present moment. The land further to the west, southwest, is Aquarian watershed lands that are owned by Aquarian. So there was some expression that, since it's those types of lands, they're not really gonna get built. You're not protecting any residents, and there is a, there is a requirement in the B1 and the B2 district that there's a larger setback from a residential zone, so all the rear lines of those lots presently have a, a larger setback than if it was next to a business zone. The difference is 10 feet. And so I was asked to look at something to, to accept that, and that's up to you to decide whether you want to go forward with this. And George, if you go back to the first page, that is the text amendment, in addition to the zone boundary change. Go down to the bottom. So as I was saying, the minimum yard requirements are at the rear and side yard are 20 feet. These are rear yards. At a residential zone boundary, which is the case here, they would be 30 feet, so it's a difference of 10 feet. So the exception, if the commission was of the mind, would be the note at the, no, go up the page. Georgia? Go back to the amendment. To the bottom of the table. I don't know if you can capture that on the screen. Yeah, it's hard to read that at this scale for me, but in the paper copy you have, it said, "Except if a budding land owned by the state of Connecticut, which is permanently preserved in perpetuity in its natural and open condition for the protection of natural resources and public water supply or permanently protected open space of a solely passive nature." So this would account for any place where the B2 zone butts that kind of land. And I didn't do a search of where that would affect. We can do that between now and the public hearing to see if there's more lands that this would be impacting or benefiting, if you might think of it a different way. So that's, that's the draft for your consideration, as today has been directed.
All right, I'd like to open it up for discussion. I'll go through the roll. Leon still with us?
Yep.
I don't see you. There you are. You wanna go ahead, Leon?
Yeah, I think that we should, I'm good with the zone change, and I want to move it forward to a public hearing.
Okay, Ryan?
Uh, same.
Ron?
I'm good with that.
Bruno?
Yeah, I'm, I'm all set. This is fine.
Rob?
Yeah, I mean, adding conformity to this space, I think is a really great idea. My, my question is, is directed to Will. I mean, do you see any drawback to this at all?
Any drawback to changing the zone?
Yeah.
Not necessarily. I mean, there isn't much difference between the B1 and the B2 zone. They have the exact same bulk requirements. The only difference between them really is that the B2 offers a few more uses, which are autocentric, meaning they're like gas stations and auto sales and, and those kinds of uses. In this area, one of the driving forces was there, there are two or three properties already used that way. I think there's always been a kind of undertone of kind of melting the B1 and the B2 zones together anyway, which is probably something we're gonna evaluate more fully in the P O C D. So it just offers a little bit more flexibility to the range of uses that could be provided on property.
Okay, thanks for that input, Will. I'm all set.
All right, then I guess we can move it towards a public hearing.
I have a couple of questions with that. This is a kind of a unique situation, because we haven't done this in a long time, where the commission's rezoned private property on its own. Procedurally, obviously, we're gonna do all the normal things as far as noticing and referrals and, and have a public hearing. Do you want us to also reach out to the individual property owners and let them know this sort of like in advance and sort of, you know, specially?
Yes.
Didn't, didn't Dave Bjorklund do that?
I don't know. He said he was reaching out to property owners. To who and to what extent? I have no idea.
Yeah, who knows, who knows what, who knows what he did? He never really said.
He said it almost a year ago.
He said he was going to.
Rick, what do you know about it?
Uh, no, I recommend that we notify all the affected property owners. It's, uh...
So Dave never notified any of them, or we just don't know?
Not all of them.
So do we know who he notified?
No, we do not have a comprehensive list.
I do certified letters to everybody, if you guys could.
That's how you do it?
Yeah.
Well, obviously, everyone's gonna get a legal notice that way. I'm saying, I'm suggesting perhaps that we reach out to them separately specially, so that they're in the know, and, and we can answer some questions before we get to a public hearing.
So will we have a public hearing on this next meeting?
It won't be next meeting. It takes more than that to get to a public hearing, because of timing and referrals, but... So there's plenty of time for us to reach out in the short term to at least let them know, and then obviously, we'll have, they'll get the formal notice as well for the hearing, in addition to a butters within 500 feet.
Okay.
So how long before we have a public hearing on this one, Will?
The earliest would be a month from now, but it's probably more like the meeting after that. Because we have to...
You're saying six weeks from now?
Well, I have to look at where we are in town. I mean, the earliest would be two meetings from now, but I gotta look at schedule and what's going on, and... But that would be the earliest we could possibly do it.
All right. Well, let's go ahead and notify the occupants. Any other discussion on this before we move on to mixed use? If not, let's move on to mixed use. So I, Will emailed everyone today on the draft zoning regulations text amendment. Did everyone get that? It was emailed. Everybody got it? Good.
Can you put that up on the screen?
I'm getting there. I had to change my screen to get it on the right one for you.
All right, so this one I'd like to go over carefully.
Yeah, Mike, I, I have a chronological overview I'd like to share.
Okay. Is this it?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Do you want to present, or do you want me to go through it?
No, I just want to give an overview where this, where this came from, where it went, and where we are now.
Okay.
Under the leadership of Chairman Porter, and in accordance with the 2010 P O C D, the zoning subcommittee took this up back in August of 2019. Essentially, the direction at that time was to allow the conversions of upper floor areas and existing commercial buildings and to allow the construction of a true mixed-use development, commercial first-floor, upper-floor apartment units. And this was to be allowed on Routes 25, 111, and 34. So we had several discussions on that, and then what happened? It morphed into other opportunities, including elderly housing and standalone residential and commercial buildings with restrictions. The last zoning subcommittee that we had, it was determined that we really needed to reel back and really focus on the original intent, and that was to concentrate on the existing commercial buildings and the conversions of the upper floor area and the true mixed-use developments, and the commission knows what development is being pursued at this time. So I just wanted to give a history on where, you know, how it began, what the thought process was, and how it morphed into more things. And as we're all gonna discuss, we always have the affordable housing watching over us on this, but I think after we discuss the current draft, you'll see where we're at, and then we can get a consensus. That's it.
Before you guys go further, I just want to know that, let you know that, that this is a preliminary draft. It's a work in progress. I have not even printed it and, and proofed it. There are still some other items that need to be done, but the chairman and Rick thought it important to get to you, in front of you, to get some of the big picture ideas discussed as we work through this. But there, there is still some work that needs to be done to this.
Yeah, Rick, did you get a build-out on all these properties?
Yeah, as I reported at the zoning subcommittee, the Route 25 is on the low side 300. That, that can grow substantially if you allow a higher density unit, density provision, more than the 2.5 that you have allowed in Monroe. I just finished the 111. That's a lot lower, 75 to 100 units. And then, of course, on 34, it's minimal, but you do have the Stevenson lumber. And then, of course, on 34, it's minimal, but you do have the Stevenson lumber. That's an unknown, but it's a large parcel as we all know. But clearly, the market is focusing on Route 25 as we speak. You you know, the applications that are coming in. And I think the developers on 111 are going to rethink what you know, what they're doing and what the market wants. And then, of course, we have to remind ourselves of Stevenson lumber. Route 34 is minimal.
So just to clarify, this those numbers are the maximum number of units that could possibly be built throughout town.
Yeah, based on 2.5. And of course, it's all predicated on the septic system and, you know, that hasn't been done comprehensively.
So do you want to go through the this language section by section?
Sure. Okay, in the beginning, we have the purpose and intent is to allow the mixed use development. This this was all initiated, as I stated earlier, in 2010 P O C D. You want a mixed use that will add to the grand list without imposing any type of unnecessary burden to town services and municipal infrastructure. Georgia, can you scroll up now? The location, it's always been discussed for the 25, 111 and 34 corridors. We have discussed at the zoning subcommittee level look at the 25 corridor area separately. And then 111 and then lastly 34. But it is the consensus to do it all especially now with pulling back on the development uses. Next, Georgia.
Okay, can we can we scroll up? Did you?
So the part about this, Rick, that's a little different.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Will.
Is it the schedule of uses would would spell out that you could have apartments above commercial uses? So in discussion, I I think we came around to there was kind of two modes. One was you got an existing building and they either build a second story or they have a second story that's that's not producing much income because the office market really doesn't exist. And it's been vacant and they can convert that space into into residential units. The other mode would be you have either a tear down or a green site. And you build from from the ground up and you build a commercial center with commercial on the first floor and residential on the second floor. So it's basically apartments above commercial specs. That is the the use that would be allowed and it would be on it in in combination with a commercial property. Then you get the mixed use. So that's that's the use that we're talking about here. Basically apartments above commercial space, whether it be an existing building or a new building.
Well, just as an FYI, I just disconnected from any desk. And I don't know what that means for the meeting apparently in backup, but.
That's okay. Your thing stayed here.
Okay, all right. We should be good. Sorry.
So that's 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 the principal use. It's being added as a special exception use is apartments above commercial space. And it looks at the center as a whole. When you do that, you do that all the time whenever you do any use. And so that's the added use. That's a special permit use is the apartments above commercial space. And then the the regulations spell out how that happens.
So there's no way with this that it's going to allow separate residential dwellings and commercial dwellings just on the property as long as it really has to be on the second floor, right?
That's how this is.
We decided to hold off on that. Yeah, we decided to hold off on that for now.
Yeah. So, yeah, I just want to make sure that specifically we're just talking residential on second floors. As long as that's a stipulation, I'm good.
Yes, that's what this is saying. Do you want to?
As I indicated, commissioners, it did morph into something greater and we needed to pull it back because we want this to be successful at the public hearing. And we want the commission to feel comfortable, especially with the numbers because you may get a rush of applications. And you want to be able to control it.
But, Rick, we need to get the build out for all these for 111, 25 and 34. I mean, we we need to know what's the potential that could happen throughout the town.
Leon, one of the one of the problems with that is we have no way of knowing the septic capacity of a property. We can do assumptions. But we we can't since we're septic as opposed to sewer. It's very difficult to articulate or or quantify with any kind of real surety. Because every use generates a different demand. And, you know, as a shopping center changes its tenants, whether it be a wet tenant or dry tenant, that uses up more septic. You add apartments. Obviously, that's a wet use. It adds more. So we can you can continue to do some build out analysis. But as long as you understand, they're not comprehensive and they could be way off in both directions.
No, I understand, but I just need to to have some kind of like I mean, if we even if it was 50% of what you thought, I mean, at least we know.
Yeah.
What's the potential?
Leon, absolutely. We we have a range. And I'll share that with the health director. Because we want it to be as accurate as possible, but there's a lot of variables.
And, Rick, I think what we should do is is the rest of the commission members that are that should speak out if they have any concerns on this so that either we bring it back to the subcommittee and we look at it, or if you want to move forward with a full commission, but we need to get their concerns because we, me, Mike and Bruno, we we look at this and I wanted to get some input from the rest of the commission members.
Well, let me spell out a few more things and then we can do that again. If that's okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
You want to scroll down, George?
So the next session section is about accessory uses and this is really simple. Obviously signage. You know, adding a residence, you know, we all are today probably sitting in our home. There's a lot of people that work from home. Just because you're an apartment shouldn't mean you should exclude it from that. So one of the accessory uses we'd be adding would be having accessory home occupation. The only difference with that is the definition of home occupation allows non resident employees, given that it's an apartment. I don't think that would be the same as a single family dwelling. So the only exception to the home occupation would be that it's just for the resident that lives in the apartment. So that could be, you know, more than one person that they're living in the apartment, but that's not going to be non residents. The second, the third bullet is is, you know, accessory maintenance, recreational, social things. So if they want to do a lobby, they want to do a meeting room, depending on scale, of course, depending on how many apartments are there. I would provide for that. Of course, off street parking, landscape line. These are just standard things in every every use category. And then we're saying that the accessory uses, building and structures that relate to these apartments should be coordinated and were feasible shared with those of the commercial site uses. Because, again, that's part of making it a mixed use development. The last category is garages. I don't know if you want to allow garages, not allow garages. And if you allow garages, do you want to say anything like, you know, there to be in the rear, not visible from the street? Or, you know, whatever. The next section is lot and bulk requirements. We're not changing any of the lot bulk requirements for the underlying zones. So whatever they are in the B one, B two, L O R, they stay the same. Again, we're only adding a use into the mix. So that's not not changing those things. So the apartments don't change those things. Density. The density would be based on from the committee regulation, subcommittee discussion would be, and again, this is a starter, would not exceed 50% of the combined total habitable floor of both the commercial and the residential apartment units. So an example is if you had 10,000 square feet building, you know, no less than 5% is commercial, 5,000 would half of that would be commercial. The other half could be the apartment. You could have more commercial, but you couldn't have more residential. And that the access to the residential units would be through a central interior shared access. That's more safe. That's typically how things are getting built these days. If you remember the old hotel motel example, nobody really builds motels anymore because they're not safe. Quite frankly, women don't go to motels because it's not safe. It's not a very attractive thing seeing door after door. So we're just following suit with that and keeping the commercial center that way. So the density is set more. It's not setting a number of units. It's setting how much square feet can be devoted to the the units. The applicant can then later decide how to divide that space up into how many units that work with his septic is water and with the other requirements. And, you know, we'll get to that in a second. So like for for bed, for instance, bedrooms. So these apartments can be a studio, a one bedroom or a two bedroom unit. So a different person, you know, with that 5,000 square feet might want to have several studios, might want to mix. So that's sort of left up to the applicant to decide and based on its on its septic capabilities and its other capabilities of parking and whatnot. An important component that we see in other regulations, which Rick had mentioned, was this last sentence that libraries, dens, studies, offices, lofts and other similar spaces will be counted as bedrooms to the purpose of these regulations. A lot of times you'll see in multi family development, there's always this ubiquitous room that they call a den or an office. And the next thing you know, it ends up being a bedroom. So we're taking the the stance that if you include those things, we're just going to count them in bedrooms. Whether you use it as that or not, it doesn't matter. We're going to count it as a bed. And you can use it for those purposes, but again, for density, it's going to be a better size. So the discussion was to have a minimum of 500 and a maximum of 1,200. Again, that's up to you all to decide if those are what you you want, or if you want to go into things specific to the individual type of units. The next section on the next page primarily deals with okay, obviously, we have an existing building. They're going to put us either put on a second floor or they're going to use a second floor differently. Obviously, the commercial uses are already there. This this section is mainly for when you're building a brand new building. So the committee has stressed, and I think commissioners have stressed, the importance of including the commercial component of having a true mixed use. And that giving up some of the space for residential apartments is is giving something up, but you still want commercial. So this is trying to get at how do we get that built into a new development? And this is trying to say, and again, I didn't prove it, but it's trying to say basically that you're supposed to build them simultaneously or of course, or the apartment subsequent to the commercial. And that the certified occupancy, that means getting a C O from the billing department, meaning the space is done and ready to be a tenant could go into it or a tenant could fit it up with a permit. That at no time shall more than 50% of the residential apartments be given us occupancy if less than 50% of the commercial space is built and certified. And the idea is that when you get 100%, you get 100% of both. I I think this needs a little work. It is a little unclear about what happens after 50%. But the if you get the idea, the idea is to to get the commercial development at the same time as the apartment, not get just apartment. The next section is dealing with affordability. Obviously, when you're looking at any residential development, there is the affordability quotient that comes into play. The commission, the committee has kind of focused on about 10%. And what it's saying is and it's and it's 10 or more units. So if you have 10 or if you have less than 10 apartments, this doesn't kick in. So if you have 10 or more, you know, if you build a brand new thing, got 10 or more units, 10% has to be meeting this income stance. I think this needs a little bit more more language to back up what it's saying, but I think you get the idea. And that those units would be of equal stature as the base unit of the market rate unit. Obviously, a market rate unit, if somebody wants to trick it out better, that's up to them, but the affordable units would have to be at least the minimum starting point as every other unit in the in the center. And that they would be proportionally sized and bedroom configured. So for instance, if you did a mix, the and there was multiple, if there was a multiple number of units and there was a mix and there was multiple affordable ones, they would have to kind of be equal in proportion to that mix. So it isn't all just studio apartments. And that also that they be dispersed. So they're not all stuck in one corner and that they their appearance from from the exterior, for all sense of purposes, is no different than the others. This is standard language for this kinds of regulation. The next section we had talked about and didn't really land. And I don't know if you want to, but if you want to make any units ADA accessible and built to ADA standards, which means larger hallways or wider doorways, kitchens built a little different bathrooms, built a little different. You know, for more of a senior population. Third, I don't know where we stand with sidewalks and pedestrian provisions, or if that's just something that would come natural with the overall development. The next section would be utilities. You know, obviously, we have limitations of septic. So we don't want to put the added burden of wells. So this really needs to be connected to the water supply, a public water supply. Sewer system obviously would be on site. And that other utilities would be underground if they're new or altered. Obviously, if there's existing utilities above ground and they're not changing them, they would stay unless they wanted to alter them. But if they brought in new things or changed something, it would be new. And certainly, the new development would be underground. Refuse and recycling should be coordinated and shared with the commercial uses. Obviously, we don't want to have more than we need on the sites. So the idea is to have a true mixed use development. So those are the things that were kind of pounded out in the last few days. Like I said, this is just a pre draft. And Mike, I think you're going to have some direction on some of the larger picture issues. But the other things that have to be addressed is I got to do the amendment to the to the schedule of permitted uses. That's just the the big table that shows you across the board, the zones, what uses permitted. That's mostly this ministerial. The other is an off street parking standard that this is a new use and we have to have an appropriate parking standard. And how that relates to a studio, a one bedroom or two bedroom is something we have to look at because we don't want to overpark. But we want to have enough parking and it has to be parking somewhat dedicated to some level to the residents because the residents could be there 24 hours a day or have access to the unit 24 hours a day. And if it's a good shopping center and there's no parking spaces for them, that could be a problem. So those are something we have to think about. And there's a few other things I think we have to think about, but I haven't had time to get into that. So, Mike, I give it back to you.
Well, most of the big items are included in this draft. The fact that we're only talking about building above commercial, no freestanding apartments at this point, although that's next, that's right down the road. It was felt that for the purposes of a public hearing, we need to start with baby steps. So we're not including freestanding apartment buildings and we're not including H or senior buildings at this point either, which is something else that's right down the road. But most of the big items are on here, so I just wanted to get an idea from the members that are not on the committee if you're okay with this. Will, like he said, will fill in the details and it's of course, come back to everyone on the full commission again, before it goes to a public hearing. But we're getting close. So Ryan, no, you're not on the committee.
Yeah, I like the idea. I mean, I don't know if you I saw the question mark. So for garages, I'd I'd like that if If we were to allow garages, I'd want them behind, uh, in the rear, uh, you know, screened. Um, but I'm not one hundred percent sold on garages. I'd also be okay with no garages. Uh, for the spots, is there something that we could put in the narrative, maybe assigning? Um, like a spy know, uh. Um, Rick, you had sent us some of those locations to go check out. I did go and look at the Mark in Shelton. And I do know they have, you know, reserved spots for their units and then they have a couple of guest spots for visitors. Um. I don't know if that's something we can want to look into or add and. Get into that much depth into this kind of detail that the residents would have an assigned spot.
Well, the mark is a, is a total all residential.
They're all apartments, yes, but they're.
Market rate.
Yeah.
Right.
Um. Uh, what was one of the other? Uh, I, I, I like the idea that. You know, we have, everyone always would complain about septic, but I think septic helps us here because it allows us to kind of keep it. Smaller and prevents it from getting large. I guess my question would be, what about some of these units that are right on? The town line. Is there a possibility that these owners could? Connect to. Like Trumbull Sewer and all of a sudden what we thought was going to be limited by septic becomes much bigger because they've managed to. Pipe into a sewer.
Well, this doesn't, this would account for that. I mean, the sewer systems are saying that, well, I guess I gotta change on site, so.
Um. That would just be my one concern. I'd hate for them to be like, yeah, we're going to build this. And then all of a sudden. Because they managed to get themselves sewers, all of a sudden we're dealing with some massive development.
Well, I think we're going to have to. Realize that there is a property that has sewers, so this would kind of exclude that. And I don't think that was the intent. Um, but that is the only property. And if someone else, I don't know how else someone could get sewer necessarily, but.
Just an idea.
Yeah.
Uh, but that's it. I like it. I'd, I'd like it to, you know, obviously, as you said, clean up some of the language, but definitely, uh, get a draft going. That's all.
You know, we, we really pulled it back. So it's workable. And, uh, my, my comfort level is there and I, I want to thank Will, you know, for formatting it. But I, and we've been, we've been sharing this with Francisco because it's come, it's going to come up in the P O C D. And we have to provide a affordable housing plan. Uh, by two thousand twenty-two. And that has to identify where you want to put the affordable housing. So. This, this text amendment. Can have it in it, or you may want to remove it. But down the road, it, it's going to have to be included. And the applicants so far are saying, we do not want to provide for, we want all market rate. So that's a big issue you have to, uh, deal with.
So you're specifically talking about that line about the, uh, you know, ten units or more have to have.
Yeah. That was the starting point. That the committee came up with. It's fair, it's reasonable, it's consistent. And Francisco, uh, endorses it. Because it's going to become a reality. You can just, you can put it off. But it's going to come to reality. Um, anytime down the road.
I like it. I understand that, you know, the. The people that want to build it don't, you know, they'd rather. Get as much money as possible for every unit, but. You know, the alternative is not having this and they have no units. So I'm okay with the, the, that small percentage.
Okay, uh, Rob, do you have any, um? Anything, any comments?
Yeah, I'll start with, uh, with a comment and get into some questions. Um, first off, mixed use by definition is considered a type of urban development. Comprising a residential, commercial, cultural, institutional entertainment uses. I want to make sure that we're considering all aspects and not just the first two. Um, I have a few questions and I'm going to go, um, going to present as just talking points for now. I feel that these are important questions that need a close look to answer. And as a commission, I feel like if we rush shoes and get it wrong, it can have longstanding detrimental effects. Uh, the first question would be, has there been a comprehensive housing needs study? Second would be, do the numbers work? When we look at the grand list versus a potential increased tax burden mainly coming from educating additional students. Are the residential units intended to be rented or owner occupied? Um, what percentage of the units would be age restricted and low income units? Um, do we know how this will affect our current home values? Um. Also, have we taken a close look at the environmental impact as our town is obviously on septic? And lastly, has there been any kind of a traffic study conducted for this? Um, I just want to make sure that we have a nice solid foundation for which to build upon to assure successful mixed use.
Well, well, you, you want to go over them one at a time?
Yeah.
We'll start with the first. If you could repeat, I don't remember them.
I, I haven't. We, we don't have a housing need study. Um, we do have identification in our P O C D. That talks about housing. Um, and it does talk about recommendations for residential apartments. Has.
As far as I know, it does also indicate that there is a need for a housing needs study.
I, I'm with you. Um, so that's also something you could look at in the current. Update of the P O C D, obviously, since that's a ten-year-old study. Um. So that's the answer to that one. Educational impacts. Um, I, I assume you mean impact on the fiscal of the school.
The cost of the, uh, the, you know, these apartments show up, two-bedroom apartments, people move into them, they bring children.
Yeah, the, the national consensus and, and study and evaluation on. Uh. Residential units. The cutoff is at the two-bedroom. Um, the number of generated school-aged children. Um, across the nation is significantly little. In comparison to when you jump up to the three-bedroom. Um, the numbers are, are quite, quite stark and different. Um, that doesn't mean that in isolation and in specific location that that's always true. Um, but that is the. Uh, analysis that's been done by Rutgers University for many years. Um, and has, has been relied on by many municipalities, not just in Connecticut, but in, in across the country. Um, in saying that. Two-bedroom and less units don't really generate school-aged children, therefore they don't generate the cost of, of. Of, of that. They may be incubators and a stepping stone into the community to buying a house. Um.
Hey, Will.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, Rob, Will's a hundred percent right. There's a, there's a lot of studies done on that kind of stuff. And, um, this was discussed during the subcommittee meeting about, uh. About, uh. Impact of school systems and so on and so forth. Uh, definitely something in consideration that we definitely discussed. Um. Um. You know, a, a lot of the stuff you're asking is, uh, is, uh, stuff that. We started to consider, but you know. There is a, uh. There's only a limited time when you got three people and, uh, and Rick and Will in there, so. But.
Unless, I know you guys spent a long time framing this out and I'm, I'm not by any means trying to give anybody a hard time with this. I just think. We've got to, we've got to get to the, you know, the foundational questions on this before we start figuring out how many we're putting up and where the parking spaces are going.
No, I agree with you, but I, there, there's also, we're also very far away from having this into, uh. Into regulation as well.
You know, and the other thing is anecdotally, I, I can appreciate the, um, the studies that you guys have, have looked into. Um, I've owned many residential two-bedroom units, both in Monroe and in the surrounding towns. And I can assure you that every time I had a tenant, they brought children in.
At the end of the day, we. At the end of the day, there's a need. And we can't control what people bring in. Um.
Exactly.
I, I. Uh, I've owned a property too, where people have put people in the basement. And I mean, it just, we can't control all that stuff. I know that's not the, the greatest answer and probably exactly what we're looking for, but. You know, you can't control everything that happens. That goes for commercial as well. That's not just in, in mixed use.
Well, and again, this is open for your, your, your discussion, your own determination, but. Um. The committee had put forth. The idea that you could have studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom units, but that no more than ten percent of the total apartment unit count. Shall consist of two-bedroom units. Now. I, I don't know what that. That might mean that if you have, you can't have a two-bedroom unit until you have ten units. So that's something to think about. Um. The other thing you asked about is that rented or owned. Um, I believe this is all directed toward rental units. I think the draft should probably be a little bit more explicit about that. Um, because if it's going to be condominium ownership, that's going to, that would change quite a bit. That'd be a lot different. I don't think that's really attracting, but. It's not going after the use in a commercial mixed use thing if you put in condominium units. So I think it should be a little bit more explicit about that. It certainly is bent towards being, uh, just rental. Um, so that's something I can work on if that's what the commission is looking at. Um, age restricted and low income, none of this is age restricted. Um, there was the, the thought of, do you want to do anything to abide for, um, elderly as far as ADA units? Um, as far as income. Um. When you say low income, I only can go based on what I know are definitions of low income. Um, this is really targeting the affordable is eighty percent, which is really called moderate income. Um, and to give an example, I can't do it within the apartment because we don't have any. But we do have eight affordable housing houses in the, on West Maiden Drive. And those are single-family detached homes. They're not small. They're all three, four-bedroom homes. Um, so they're not exactly comparable, but they are, there are. Um, eight of them. And I believe, I forget what the mix is, but I think five of them are eighty percent medium and the other three are sixty percent medium income. Um, and when the eighty percent ones, we've had three of them go for sale in the last few years. They've been selling at the pri, at the affordable price of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, um, again, that's the kind of affordability. For that kind of unit. Obviously apartments will be a little different. They're smaller, they're not a house, but. A moderate income unit is, is certainly not a low income or what people. Might think of affordability being. Um. The other comment you had was environmental impact. Um. We haven't done an environmental assessment overall. I guess somewhat of the build out is looking at some of that potential build out. Um, whether it be apartments or whether it be more commercial space, the properties will yield what they yield. Um, so. They're not going to necessarily allow more physical development of these properties. There's just the uses that they, they can use. And if you put apartments on it, you're going to have a higher septic demand. And that in itself might either self-regulate to having fewer apartments or not having any at all. Um. So the land that we have is limited in the commercial district, as you're all aware. Um, they're not all that large. So again, the use is not going to have an environmental impact per se, other than perhaps. A higher septic capacity. And that could have an environmental impact because you might have to have bigger septic system that you might otherwise not have. If it was all retail stores, which don't generate a lot of septic. So that would probably, but then you have to rely on, it has to be designed to standards. And if you design a system and build it to standard, it should be safe. So that's sort of the rationale that goes with that.
And I also can't help, I can't help but think about if the systems were to fail. What do you do with these people if these systems are under parking lots and they're squeezing these postage, uh, stamp lots, you know? If in, in the event that one needs to be replaced or serviced, that could be, you know, problematic for, for, uh, the, the tenants for parking or the, uh, the commercial, uh, side of things.
That's true. I mean, you have more septic, you have more risk. In that regard. Um. But. Uh, the other you said was traffic study. Uh, there wasn't a traffic study done specifically to this, obviously. Um, but there was a traffic study done for the twenty-five, for the first, the lower section of twenty-five. And the one eleven corridors. Um, that looked at and projected development across those corridors. It did not have this use in mind at the time. It was looking at the build out. Of the different developments or lots on those properties. And it, it obviously looks at traffic. It identifies today, there's a lot of failing intersections. It projected how to fix that through, uh. Double laning. Most of the roads, at least in the study section. Um, to increase level of service or improve level of service. That requires obviously, uh, significant improvements to the road. Um, in some respects, when you get a development, you can also look at the traffic and that impacts. That an individual development will have on a case-by-case basis as well. When, when they come in front of you, but there isn't a specific traffic study. Uh, directly to the added this, this use. This would obviously take away from some of that commercial development potential. Um, and commercial development. In some respects could have a higher traffic generation than the apartments would. Um, and obviously there are different peak hours. Um, of use. Um, so there could be actually somewhat of a reduction from what those recommendations or those analysis had said. If you were just building it out as all commercial development. So I think that was your topics.
Yeah, other than the home values, I mean, that's kind of hard to quantify, well, how this, what, what kind of effect this is going to potentially have unless we did some kind of a case study. With a, uh, a town similar to Monroe that doesn't have sewer, uh, it would, it would probably be tough to. To find a town that would, uh, replicate ours.
Uh, actually, Rob Woodbury would be the closest one.
Okay.
And, uh, if I can add something, Rob. I, I have, uh. Numbers that I did in Shelton, we did an analysis. Of all the apartment complexes that was recently built in the last ten years. It, it should be noted that the three-bedroom units at Avalon on Bridgeport Avenue. At, uh, exit eleven. Uh. Really was high with school-aged children. Resulting in a school bus having to go there. And that, all the other ones, Rob, the two bedrooms or under. Was minimal, but I'll, I'll share that with you. The three bedrooms, y- you're talking to family.
Hmm. Now you, you're talking specifically about Shelton now and not Woodbury.
Yeah, and Shelton, I, when I was there, we did evaluations because we got a lot of new apartments. And the, the three-bedroom units in the Avalon complex on exit eleven. That resulted in a school bus having to go there.
Well, you know, Rick, with all due respect, I, I can appreciate that. Um, Monroe has a much better reputation with our school system. It, it pulls a lot of people to our town. Um, and that is a, that's a big selling feature from Monroe. So I, I think the comparison may be a little, a little off there, but. Nonetheless, it's a comparison.
No, you're absolutely right. You're, uh, in the nineties for attendance at public schools. Shelton's below that.
Hmm.
I don't think though that Rick was comparing Monroe to Shelton, Rob. I think it was. It was just that, that's where he worked before he came. And we're getting, we're getting a point of view of what Shelton was. Or what happened in Shelton to hopefully make. Not make the mistakes that Shelton made, if Shelton made any mistakes. You know, Shelton may feel, Shelton may feel it's absolutely perfect for Shelton.
Hmm.
It may not work in Monroe, but Rick was there. And we're definitely not going to replicate what happened in Shelton to Monroe. That's definitely not happening.
And as Rob knows too, even if you go out of district. The town that you're in has got to provide the transportation.
Hmm.
So the school buses were going there for the three bedrooms.
Right, okay. That's all I have.
Did, did you go down and look at the mixed use, um, development in Trumbull? Just south of where Marissa's was.
I did, yep.
It's a very attractive little spot there. That's, I think, what we're looking at here and there in Monroe.
I agree with that a hundred percent. I just have this vision that all of our commercial space. Uh, you know, that's not, you know, currently occupied, that they're, we're just going to fill the second floor up with, uh, with residential units. And it's not going to add much to, to the bottom line. That's what I'm thinking. You know, I'm looking at twenty-five going up and down and I'm saying to myself, where's the septic going to go? All this, uh, open space up on top. I, I feel like the existing landlords are just going to make apartments all over the place. I, I feel like the existing landlords are just going to make apartments fall over the place. I, I don't have that same vision that we're going to see nice, beautiful new developments like what you're talking about. Because we all can appreciate that development. It came out beautiful.
And Rob, you raised a good point too. You can, you can guide this growth geographically, because that, that was discussed. Holding it to geographical areas of 25, 111, 34. You can't control it. You can do it in.
Got it.
Um, Ron, we haven't heard from you.
Well, you guys kind of said everything already and, you know, I, I know you guys, I kind of trust you guys that are on the, on the, uh, the plan of the town where I haven't been able to go to those meetings. I, the only thing I can point out is if just the few of us have the list of concerns that we have, I can only imagine the nightmare it's going to be when it goes public. A simple question, why is doing this making Monroe better?
Well, we have a lot of vacant area above the old strip malls. I mean, getting right, getting back to the original, um, impetus for this.
So because.
The strip malls are empty, um, you know. If you have an opportunity to put a couple of apartments above your strip mall, maybe then you might, um, clean it up a little bit. You know what I mean? Put new siding on, um, pave the parking lot. You know what I mean?
And it attracts businesses because the idea that, oh, you have a couple of people living upstairs, maybe they're going to come down to my coffee shop every morning. It, it helps kind of make these empty lots that have been, I mean, think of like Art Center, stuff like, some of these spots have just been vacant and falling apart. This, this helps promote that. And, um, yes, you're adding residents and you're bringing that in, but you're also promoting, uh, more economic development. Um, in sites that, yes, you might get new sites that are built, but it's also helping to uplift kind of these old sites. That, you know, when you sit through these, you know, CD meetings and stuff. And even arguments that people come to and they talk about some of these like falling apart buildings when you drive down our commercial corridors. And how there's no incentive for anyone to kind of fix these up. And this, this is kind of what helps. Uh, going into the, adding the, um, the afford, the percentage of affordable housing too is, Rick briefly mentioned it, but by 2022. We're going to be required as a town to have a certain amount of affordable housing. And if we're not at that level, it's going to get forced on us. And it might not be in this way that you can kind of enjoy it where it has businesses with it. It might be a very, very more, here's a block, this is all affordable, all on top of each other, great apartments. This, this is, this is going to make the town better. Huh?
If we don't do this, we'll have no choice.
You stand, it's not that you don't have a choice, but you stand the chance of that happening.
Yeah.
That's already the, that's already the process. You can have it. There already is a.
If you look at our numbers, we're supposed to be at like 10%. I think we're at two.
One.
One.
We're at point zero two.
So our, our percentages are way below. That also goes into state funding. There's a lot of things that come, come with that as well. Another, grants, correct. Uh, another thing that we need to look at is that young, that young boyfriend, girlfriend, that young just-married couple. That can't afford to get into Monroe, but potentially could be a really good asset to Monroe. Um, and grow their, grow their family, grow their kids. This is a way for them to get in and enjoy our town. I mean, a lot of, a lot of times we hear how boring Monroe is, but there is actually, you know, there's some really nice restaurants. There's amazing people. Um, we have wonderful parks, uh, it's safe, it's, it's clean. There's a, there's a lot to, to be offered through Monroe and you can attract that, that young couple that just got out of college that want to start their family. You can attract them into Monroe with, with, um, mixed use. You know, I, I know everybody's mind goes right to the negative, oh, we're going to attract X, Y, Z. You, you know. That, that's not guaranteed. It, it, there's just as good of a chance of attracting X, Y, Z in the good as there is in X, Y, Z in the bad. You know, it, well, could it affect our septic system? Of course. But so could anything else? You know, could it impact our schools? Sure. Though could turning Stevenson into, uh, a thousand homes? I mean. I, 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 I know other people make phone calls to, to talk to people to, to get their points across, but, you know. Sometimes there's, there's definite ways to, to, to look at the positive. Um, um, I guess that's just, that's just where I lie. I look at it more positive than the mass amount of negative it can be. That's all.
There's a mass exodus happening right now in, in the cities. People are leaving. COVID was a big part of that. I mean, and I'll, I'll speak more as, not to dig into anyone, but the youngest person on the commission. A lot of people my age that originally thought, oh, we're going to live in Manhattan. My next-door neighbor. Her, uh, you know, uh, daughter's my age, her daughter, uh, husband and her baby they just had. Had been living in Manhattan. They just had the baby like a month ago. They just moved back here and now they're all in the house right now. And they're looking, they're looking for a place. They're probably going to settle on a location in Fairfield. Um, but, you know, they both have really good jobs and they're just kind of looking for something. People don't want houses our age. They don't want something so big. They want a little. You know, they want to be out of the city now. They want to be able to, you know, that commute where working from home is looking a lot better. And buying something affordable in town, especially when you have kids, as you guys know, it's, you know, these schools. I, I, not just your kids, but a lot of you went to these schools. I mean, I went to these schools. They're great schools. And the ability to do that, and especially at a young age, it, it, these apartments that we used to think weren't something anyone was going to want. Because who wants to live in Monroe when you're young? And it, it's more and more attractive now, especially that people just do not want to be in the cities. So on top of each other.
Can I add two things, uh, to Rob's comments to? Hey, Rob? I, I think Francisco.
Yes.
The, uh, information that we need for Woodbury and the breakdown, region 14 is very similar, as you know, to Massacre. So I'll see if he has that. And secondly, I want to share a story. I'm in Southbury. We lost a eight-dash-thirty G and ended up with a two-story box, 14 units on Route 67. The product isn't good. So we got to be proactive. We've been very lucky in Monroe. So we, it's, it's breathing down our back. And they're submitting a second application with that same footprint, that same building in another part of town. Because they are getting occupied, region 15, good school system too. And, um, so it's, it's going to, it's going to come.
Yeah, I definitely think strategizing for 2022 with the eight-thirty G is, is a good plan. I'm just not so sure that this is the approach. If we could package it into this, that's great. But we definitely need to strategize for that.
We're having good conversations because this is coinciding with our 2020 P O C D.
All right.
So Mike, it looks like, uh, back to another subcommittee.
Well, yeah, let's have, have, um, we'll put some more meat on the bones of the pre-draft that we've all been looking at tonight. And, um, we'll bring.
I'll have projections. I'll get some projections and I'll talk to the health director. We, 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 we got to come to a consensus on this.
Yeah, we'll come back with the full draft. Um, at our next meeting and, um, go from there. Um, well, that brings us to correspondence and the new applications which you can see listed. Um, and then commission reports. Um, my report, I want to thank you for having patience with me tonight. Uh, with my who's on first and what's on second. I promise I'll get better at that. Um, do we have any commissioners' reports?
I just wanted to say, Mike, this, this chair fell in your lap unexpectedly and, and it's, it's been an undertaking and I think you've been doing a great job.
Well, thank you. Um, and then Rick, do you have a report?
Yes, I'm pleased to report that we're approaching 2,000 received questionnaires for the P O C D. Uh, Francisco was very impressed. Obviously, everyone's at home. But we got the word out, you know, we'll put it online, uh, chamber to help us. So, uh, that's very good. The only problem is we're looking to have the townwide meetings after Labor Day, you know? And no one knows. We, we, we can't get that assembly of, of 50, 100 people yet.
Maybe virtual?
It's something that hasn't been done. So just like, just like with our schools, we may have to do that. So. Um, well, I'll be talking to Francisco, so I'll, I'll, I'll find out about that.
Well, we see how well the Democratic Convention has been going on virtual. So why not try it?
They have more money and good television.
Anything else, Rick?
No, with this, uh, you know, the, uh, the subcommittee's, uh, very important. Did you want to talk about that anymore, uh, Mike?
I don't know. Am I missing anything?
No, I think you addressed it.
All right. Well, then, uh, we'll, Chair will entertain a motion. Sorry?
I said motion to adjourn.
That's what I was thinking. And a second. Thank you all.
Thanks, let me say.
Good night, guys.